It's seven o'clock, but the meeting is called over. We'll welcome everyone here tonight. And we're glad you're here and have a lot of special guests here. You're welcome. And we're gonna stand for the pledge, and after that, Mr. Farrell, I'm gonna leave and say a word in prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. Lord, we thank you for this opportunity to serve your children. And we thank you for the others in this room to help serve and serve your children. Lord, we just thank you for all your many blessings that you've given us. And thank you for all the ones that's coming. Watch over and guide us and direct us to do your will. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Farrell. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Most by Mr. Clark, second by Ms. Eubanks. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, most opposed. Now, we have a consideration of superintendent's contract. Dr. Combs and I have been talking, and Dr. Combs has been through all stages with these buildings as far as from the tornadoes all the way to where we are now. And he would like to be here after the builders are built to give them, make sure that they're occupied, whatever. There's gonna be some problems, you know, after everything is said and done. And we need some continuity. We need someone that's familiar with what's going on now and what's going on when they're finished. And so, anyway, he would like to stay another year. I believe it's, you know, one more year after his contract is up in twenty-six. Anyway, I move that pursuant to paragraph eleven B, I, I, of the board's contract of involvement with Dr. Combs, the board agreed to mutual termination of the contract effective at twelve midnight, Thursday, March fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, and authorized the chairman to enter a new agreement with Dr. Combs as director of schools beginning at twelve oh one a.m. Friday, March fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, through June thirtieth, June tw- June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven, under the same terms and conditions as his current contract. No monetary changes, just a date change, that's all it is. And I'm making that as a motion.
Seven.
Second by Mr. Benson. Now, we're open for any discussion, any question.
It's just one year from what originally it was, right?
Yes.
I had years, three years, Tom.
Yeah, well, you can't go any more than four years, so, yeah, just, yes. But it'd be twenty-six, twenty-seven, yes. All those in favor, any other questions before we vote? All those in favor, the motion let it be known by saying aye, opposed, most opposed. Dr. Combs, congratulations.
Thank you.
Glad to have you, and glad to have you on board after this school board. Can we call him a twelve oh one to congratulate him?
Thank you.
All right, now, I would like to, Dr. Bird, Director of Instructions, you're on board now.
I didn't know I was.
Consent agenda.
We're gonna go, we're gonna, we'll get it later. Well, let me do one of them before we start. Are there any additions to the agenda? That's what we do to consent. I got ahead of myself, Dr. Bird, I apologize. Are there any items that anyone would like to remove from the consent agenda for discussion? If not, do we have a motion to approve it, second? Most by Mr. Farrell, second by Ms. McClark. Are all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, most opposed. Now, Dr. Bird, your time.
Tonight, we'll start with our Americanity Teacher of the Month. We are excited to congratulate Miss Crystal Hill. Miss Hill will come up, and her principal can come with her if she'd like. She has a speech. This is Miss Crystal Hill, and she is the building level mentor and learning loss coordinator at Atoka Elementary School. She's been there for eight, or been in the district for eighteen years. I don't think Atoka's eighteen years old yet. Get close. Miss Hill, this is what Miss Lisa said about Miss Hill in her nomination. "Miss Hill consistently demonstrates an unparalleled commitment to the learning environment and students at Atoka Elementary. As learning loss coordinator and building mentor, she works to help implement creative strategies in the classroom setting and goes above and beyond to help ensure that every student feels supported in their academic journey. Miss Hill actively collaborates with all teachers at Atoka Elementary and contributes valuable insights to enhance the overall teaching and learning experience at our school. I am proud of the great work she does each day and wholeheartedly recommend her Teacher of the Month." So, congratulations to Miss Crystal Hill. I worked with Miss Hill for eight years, and she was an excellent teacher, and very well deserved. Tonight, we also have some other special teachers here who have been, who have, last month, you all approved their tenure status. And so, teachers, when I call your name, if you will come up, and I guess we'll just kind of make the line across here. Dr. Combs is gonna help me give out certificates. So, when I call your name, and I think we have some who aren't here, that's all I need. Yes, they should be there. I'll step to the side so you guys can see. Ms. Jessica Arthur from Atoka Elementary. Rachel Varger, Muncford Elementary, come on up. Ms. Tanya Bell from Brighton High School. Matthew Boucher from Brighton High School. Ms. Tiffany Bruce, I saw her come in, Muncford High School. Mr. Slade Calhoun from Muncford High School. Ms. Emery Clark, Drummond's Elementary. Ms. Anna Lashman from Atoka Elementary. Mr. John Eleanor from Bright Middle. Ms. Courtney English from Muncford Elementary. Mr. Joseph Fish from Brighton Elementary, I'm sorry, from Muncford High School. Shelby Glover from Brighton Elementary. Melissa Goodlow from Charger Academy. Michelle Hollis from Charger Academy. Heather Johnson from Drummond's Elementary. Ms. Kimberly Lowe from Drummond's Elementary. Rook Manning from Brighton High School.
This is a, this is a good thing.
This is not that, that good. Excuse me, Drummond's Elementary? Kelly Becklin, Drummond's Elementary? Brittany Owen, Drummond's Elementary? Ms. Dawn Plymouth, Charger Academy? Only, only a few. Laurel Sampson from Brighton Elementary? Brittany Sanford, Charger Academy? Jennifer Schofer, Brighton Elementary? Samantha Smith, Muncford Elementary? Allison Taylor, Muncford High School? Genesis Wallace, Muncford High School? Lots of smiles in her. Jeremiah Welch.
It's almost spring, Greg.
And Kelsey Williams from Brighton High School?
That it?
That's it. If y'all would stay, stay, and let us snap a quick picture. Where we're going.
Yeah, we're.
You might get a check in the mail.
Hey, if you get, you get a picture, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get a quick video. All right, y'all, I'm swinking the video around now, so be smiling. You ready? Oh, wait, I gotta put it on video. Got it. Awesome.
You guys, you're welcome to head to the board and go to the rest. Congratulations. I just have a couple of other, a couple of quick things that we're gonna give from our schedule. In your online folders, this was a question that came up last month from Mr. Farrell. He asked about a program that was going to be offered at TCAT Covington that was aligned with Blue Oval. And I put a flyer in your online folder just that would then answer that question. We actually had a meeting right after that with TCAT, and they shared that new course with us. And so, we're in the preliminary stages of planning that, but it is going to be offered next, in, beginning in August of twenty-five at TCAT.
Is that something that's gonna be available for students?
A student normally, yes, sir. This month, we are looking at the first half of section six of the policy manual. We will do first half of section six this month and the second half next month. This is the section that's called Students. Are there any policies that someone would like to discuss in this section? And the last thing I have, tonight, we have a group of students here who participated in Scope recently, and I think Mr. Rusty Richardson, I think I saw him come in. So, if Mr. Richardson will come forward and bring those students, I know that there are a few students come on up, and our board members may ask you a few questions, and if you guys have anything to share, now, so you can give it back. So, Mr. Richardson, I'll let you introduce them, if you will. Or they can introduce themselves, however you'd like.
Hey, y'all, Rusty Richardson, Covington High School. Took these fun, fun people to Nashville for the trip to Scope, and I think they had an awesome time. Some had some important roles, but they all had an important role they played that day in the conference. So, I'll let them introduce themselves and where they came from, excuse me, what high school they represent.
Hi, my name is Jacobi Smith, and I am from Covington High School.
My name is Amaya Jones, and I'm from Muncford High School.
I'm Jimmy Richardson, and I'm from Muncford High School.
And what shall each one maybe just share, like a brief?
Somebody tell me, the most fun thing you had there at Scope. What was fun? I know you normally debate, right?
Yes.
What did you debate this time?
For our first question, we focused on the importance of internships in school and if they should be required or not for graduation. For the second question, we argued about the use of AI on homework. For the third question, we argued about the use of a four-day school week. And for the last question, we argued about the use of phone to the school.
May I ask somebody, hey, where you stood on four-day school?
I was bored at first, but after hearing, like, the consign, like, of mental issues, of broken homes, like, kids needing to get away from their house for eight hours, or, like, parents having to pay extra for childcare, it made a lot of sense as to why we have a five-day school week instead of four.
When they voted, when they voted on it, it went three fours, said no.
Oh, really?
They said no to the, to the four-day school week. Surprised me, but, yeah.
Cell phones, they blew it after one. Sixty-five to, I think, a fifteen percent vote. It was like, it was like a landslide. They wanted phones in here.
Were any of you in, like, a leadership position where you, like, were in, what, what, what was that, what did you do?
Um, I, we had a mock school board meeting. And after a lot of interviews, I was elected as the superintendent.
He's extending your contract.
We'll call you in twelve oh one, too.
I was a board member at the mock board meeting for my group, and then, towards the end of the day, I got elected as group speaker for my group, so I got to go on stage and debate pro internships.
Were you able to get out and meet a lot of other people from different communities and schools?
That was actually my favorite part of it.
Oh, yeah.
I love talking to people and conversing with them, so hearing how their school works, how it is different from ours was actually a really good experience.
Say different, is it different better or different worse?
I mean, I wouldn't say none of them were better. We all worked for the same goal.
Yeah.
But it was a little bit different how some start at eight, some start at seven o'clock in the morning, some have, you know, a program where the seniors leave at one o'clock, and they have, like, different programs. So, it was just really different, how it different from mine.
There was some schools that discussed, like, they do have the internship, but they have a virtual job shadowing, which they do as a senior in their, like, as a senior class. So, kind of like ACT prep, but seniors do job shadowing online, and they say it's a free thing through, like, Tennessee Board.
Amaya, let me ask you a question, if you don't mind. What did you think about the AI debate?
I?
Because we're, that's gonna be, we're gonna be hearing about that now until forever.
I believe that AI shouldn't be used on homework. I feel it's very similar to asking another person to do your homework for you.
What do you three independently like most about your school?
I like the extracurriculars we have at Muncford High. I'm involved in many programs, like the Mock Trial Association, DECA, and HOSA.
I'm a big FBLA person myself. I work with FBLA state, but I have to say, mine is the people. All, everybody at Agme and everybody in the staff is so hardworking. Their office is always open for it if you meet them. Mr. Rusty, he's always finding me scholarships and stuff and handing me things, you know, so I can fill out. So, I have to say, the people and the staff.
Mr. Rusty's pretty cool, ain't he?
He's a.
I would have to somewhat agree with Jimmy and say that the extracurriculars are my favorite part of the school. In the school, I feel like there are a bunch of different groups for anything that you feel that fits you, like theater, or art, or agriculture, or any sort of interest you have.
So, would you guys graduate? What's your intentions?
I plan to go into the art field.
Doing?
Illustration.
Okay.
Cool.
I plan to go into the business field or business management.
Okay.
I plan to study abroad and study nursing.
So, he's getting ready for that superintendent job, isn't he?
Sounds like we have some great representation.
Thank y'all for being here.
Thank you all, great job.
Dr. Bird, thank you. Will that report? Next is Dr. Combs, superintendent. No, I'm sorry, Katie. Ms. Katie Vaughn, I'm sorry. Catherine Vaughn.
She said she wanted to stay for the financial report, but.
I want a number.
Ms. Vaughn, just so we follow the policy, would you please state your name and, uh, your, I mean, you know, your full name, because we all, we all understand it, so. And we'll leave in five minutes, please.
Sure, yes. Hi, Catherine Vaughn. I'm a Tipton County teacher at Brighton Elementary. I've been teaching for seventeen years, elementary art, and a couple of those kids were my students in fourth and fifth. But I am here with monthly tidings from the Tipton County Education Association and to review our little speech. And I would keep it under five minutes. I think I went over a little last time. Well-known filmmaker James Cameron said, "Hope is not a strategy. Luck is not a factor. Fear is not an option." Cameron spoke these words twenty years ago, and while he wasn't talking about education, his words apply the same in the year twenty twenty-four in Tennessee and here in Tipton County schools. As we anticipate the expiration of our ESER III federal aid, we cannot rely on hope and luck to ensure programs personnel that are addressing student needs are maintained. It's very scary. Hope and luck will not be enough for our students here in Tipton County School District if the Tennessee General Assembly diverts much-needed resources from our already underfunded public schools to fund private school tuition statewide. No, we cannot depend on hope and luck. Tipton County Education Association fearlessly and unapologetically advocates for the public schools that our students, our families, and our communities deserve. We invite district leaders and school board members to be partners with us in that work. We look forward to sitting down with you and discussing what we can do together and what we cannot do alone, especially once our ESER dollars have been expended. We commend the school board for their fearless and unapologetic advocacy for the public schools that students, families, and communities in Tipton County School District deserve. Thank you for adopting the resolution, calling on the Tennessee General Assembly to fulfill their constitutional obligation to provide a system of public education for our children and do right by all Tennessee students by rejecting the governor's proposal for statewide voucher program. And we call on anyone watching this meeting live or online later to join us fearlessly and unapologetically in advocating for our public schools by reaching out to their state representatives, state senators, and to tell them to vote for the best interests of students, families, and our communities, and to reject the governor's voucher proposal that threatens the strength of our Tennessee communities and public schools. Our students are counting on our fearless advocacy, not hope and luck. Next week, we have several members during spring break of our TCEA that will be attending our TEA Day on the Hill, our certification, and they will be meeting with legislators. And we expect that we will be talking about vouchers and third-grade retention, as those are our two hot topics right now. The TEA has not planned a statewide action yet, but if there is a call to action for all of our members to go to Nashville to rally against these harmful pieces of legislation, I will let you all know. Maybe you'll come with us. That's all I have tonight. I'm gonna come.
Oh, you're good.
All right. Thank you so much, and, oh, one more thing. Thank you for our little bonus. That was so sweet. I woke up today and saw it was in my account. Yay. I've heard from many teachers about what we're using it for, from new dishwashers to, uh, little spring break funds. I know I'm gonna use it for hospital fees at my point here, but, um, but thank you all. Have a great spring break.
You too, Ms. Vaughn. Thank you. Well, Catherine, are you afraid? Be very afraid, because I'm afraid too. Very afraid. Thank you for.
Yeah, I mean, this could fundamentally change what education looks like in our state.
It's tragedy.
It makes me incredibly nervous, especially after seeing what it has done in other states where it has passed. It's not like we don't have data or points that we could look at. I mean, we can see it. So, and as a fiscally conservative gal myself, I really, I'm just kind of blown away that we're pushing for it so hard in our state.
Keep encouraging your teachers for their voice to be heard.
Right, exactly.
They're getting hires, but they need to hit more people.
So, if we have a Day on the Hill, we, uh, we're gonna show up and show up and talk to those people.
Doctor, you give Ms. Vaughn.
People's up today, don't they? We will, thank you.
Uh, now, Dr. Combs. Superintendent Updike.
Thank you all. I really wanna appreciate your confidence in me and this team. My intent, obviously, when I was able to speak with, with Mr. Marty is that, I mean, I wanna see these kids get these new buildings. And I've been there since day one, and I wanna see it come full circle. So, unfortunately, I know more about the whole process than I ever wanted to know. So, I wanna make sure I don't have to share that with anybody else, and I can keep it gentle. So, thank you. I appreciate that. Only one other thing. It is possible that I may come to you in the April meeting to ask your permission for me to go before the funding body for a bond request, okay? Now, we've kind of, I know, talked about this in the past. I know, as of now, we can't count on FEMA for the new rebuilds.
Still holding out?
We can't. Well, the problem is yes and no. So, yes, also because our insurance does not have a quote-unquote cap on it, FEMA's gonna have a hard time funding anything that we would like them to fund. They would basically, even if it doesn't, they would basically only fund what our insurance is already funding. So, that funding would overlap. It's already there. So, we can't use FEMA as a safety net for those new schools, as we had hoped, at least for the construction, right? So, remember, as our insurance discussed with you when they were here that time, what they provided was a floor, not a ceiling. We got that, right? We're gonna have to do all the bids. Now that we have a CMAR onboard, they're gonna give us some actual, what some actual bids are gonna look like, and we're gonna know what that number looks like. We are meeting bimonthly with DBI Insurance, our new CMAR, the architects, our team. We're meeting to make sure that we're all on the same page and can keep that going. With all that said, Hunter and I met with Mayor Huffman last week, last Monday, just to feel that out with him, that, you know, a bond, something like that. Remember, a bond is something, it's just like a loan. We'll be in debt service, and the school system will pay it back a little bit at a time. Twenty-five, thirty, whatever the year term is, we'll do that. But we have to request that. Even if I come before you and say, that's what I'd like to do, you know, you would vote whether or not to do that, and then I would put that before the funding body, which is the finance committee, and they would look at it and then put it before the full committee to go over that. Because, you know, really, even though we're paying it back, it puts the county in debt that way. But, you know, Mayor Huffman is on board with this. He understands that that's gonna be the process. We need to be able to have something so we don't slam everything to a screaming stop. Whenever something costs more than insurance wants to pay, we need to have, you know, another shoe to drop so that we can, so we can make sure that's covered, right? This would be what we would do in a regular building, anyway. It's just that, you know, we'll be able to use insurance for the lion's share of it. So, anyway, like I said, it's more like a safety net. I will have a better number for you in April because the CMAR, Linkus, is, is developing numbers right now to kind of bounce off of what DBI already presented to you, the two hundred and thirty-one dollars a square foot. They're gonna give us some numbers, too, to give us a little bit of a, probably a better estimate. My understanding is, once we get that final number from Linkus, that we'll be within probably six to seven percent, six to seven, not sixty-seven, six to seven percent of what the actual cost of those buildings would be. So, that'll give us a little better idea. And remember, with the CMAR, the process is, you bid that dude as you go. And there are a number of things that we will prebid. They will put out plenty early. You remember that, what we talked about? And because there are some, like, some of those big HVAC units, things like that, that we need to be able to order now so that we make sure they're in in plenty of time. So, that'd be all part of that pre-bid piece. Again, you know, all that'll come through with this CMAR onboard, and we plan to have Linkus here at the next meeting as well, so that y'all can meet them. But we're really excited about working with them. I mean, they've done this a lot. I mean, they've built, you know, carriable high schools, like the Taj Mahal of high schools in Tennessee is huge. They built that. Linkus was the construction company that did that. And another, Bartlett, I mean, they've done work in a lot of places. So, anyway, I'll have them before you in April, and hopefully, I'll have some numbers that I can share with you so that we can be thinking about what I need to go before the finance committee with as far as a bonding request. Yes, ma'am?
I know that we had hopes to have some movement out there.
Yes, we have.
What has, where are we at on that?
Coring and survey. They just did that last weekend, this week. So, they're doing a lot of coring. You know, we, we were completely cleared for, for EHP, and even if we, even if we aren't for sure we're gonna use FEMA funding, we need to make sure we clear that hurdle, anyway. So, in case we are able to use it, we've already done that, right? That's already taken care of. So, they cleared us curb to curb. We're good, EHP. So, they can core drill, it's what they're doing, take core samples, and also, they're surveying right now. And we fully expect to start having some dirtwork very soon, very soon. Again, I'll know better when I get those numbers, but Linkus is here because some of that requires part of that bidding piece. But there's our, there were trucks out there today when I drove by, doing some survey. So, we're, I mean, I'm, I'm happy to say I'm, you know, incredibly pleased with me not, I wish the buildings were up tomorrow, right? But, I mean, as far as the progress, you know, Linkus and everyone else, as long as we stay on track with the funding, I mean, there's still, yes, we can have it done by August twenty twenty-five. So, that's, that's the plan. And we're gonna keep pushing it. Absolutely. Any other questions? I really expected more than just one, y'all.
Yes, sir. Is there, is there a constant mud wrestling match going on between the insurance adjusters and people we've got?
There, there was a, yes, sir. We've, we've had multiple conversations with them. And I will say, and I'm, I'm gonna say this, I know I've been pretty hard on them. I'm also gonna say this. In the last couple meetings we've had, they've been very open to saying yes. But when we get those bids, those numbers may adjust, because, you know, that's based on our research. That's not necessarily based on exactly what those bids are gonna come back like. So, I, I feel more comfortable with that than I certainly have, you know, a few months ago. And we're gonna hold them to that. But those, that's what those bimonthly meetings are for, too, is we're kind of holding each other accountable. You know, CMAR's in the room, architect, insurance, us, we're making sure that everybody's on the same page, so that process doesn't get stopped.
What about the, I know that we talked about this previously, teachers, their personal items? I know that they were. I know that they were supposed to fill out paperwork, documentation, and give to their principals, right? Are we still kind of in, where are we at on that?
Kind of, I mean, insurance has a cap on that. I mean, they're only going to, they're only going to pay so much, total, right? And so, I mean, we've shared all that with the principals, and they've shared it with their teachers multiple times. They know the process, and that is, number one, I mean, if it were me, if I were a teacher there, number one, I would turn in, just like they did, you know, what, what their personal items were. And we've also learned something in that process, by the way, which I will touch base with later. You know, you learn more from the past sometimes than from doing it originally. But anyway, there's, I want to say like a $10,000 cap. I need to look at that. I think that's it. But then I would have also turned it in on my, my own, my homeowner's insurance. You know, I would have done that as well, if it were me. For one thing, I don't, I'm not, this is going to sound harsh when I say it, and I don't mean it that way. But this is one of the things we've learned, because remember, I was in the classroom too, and I had all kinds of stuff in my classroom for my, that I brought from home, that was mine, that I brought in there, that, that we've also learned a lesson, and that is, be careful what all you put in that classroom. Because if something like that happens, it may not be covered.
Well, and if it's just a $100, $200, something like that, it probably wouldn't be worth them filing on insurance either.
Correct.
So I wouldn't want to go through that process if I was a teacher.
Absolutely, absolutely. And the other thing is, we don't necessarily have, because what insurance is going to ask, they're just going to say, here's the cap. And the reason they do that is because they're like, did each one of your teachers inventory all their personal belongings before the tornado hit? And the answer to that is no, they did not. Our stuff's inventory that the, that the board owns, but not their own personal stuff. And that's what insurance is going to push back on. And they're going to say, that, I mean, that's why there's a cap.
So when they do eventually, I guess, pay that dollar amount that's there for that, the personal belongings, I mean, it's going to be down the road, but that will be dented out between.
I honestly, I don't know the answer to that. You know that?
So, excuse me. So the insurance has made one payment, I know specific, to teacher laws. We have three other claims we're waiting on. Mr. Turner is working on that with the principals, with the spreadsheets that Dr. Combs talked about on inventory, and how to divvy that money back out to the school. That's the process that's going. The first insurance payment for that, I want to say we deposited December the 23rd, if I'm not mistaken, that went into our revenue. And so it's a small amount of money, because it was a small claim. So that's what we're looking to do. As soon as he confirms all that, we receive the money, then we would pay that out to the school bookkeepers or to the employee individually.
That's what I was going to ask, because you said school, but when it was the teachers that had laws.
Probably, because, you know, most teachers are set up as vendors anyway for out-of-pocket rent break, kind of thing. So we probably will pay it directly to them. Because we'll have to account for that with insurance anyway. And it won't go like, the money go to the school, and the school's like, oh, that's great. We needed a new, that's right, clock in this right now. It goes to the, to the person.
That's a good question. The other thing, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
On the bond, so, I mean, let's get the bond paid for it, but when you said we pay that back.
The school system.
The school system? So what, how does that come out of our budget?
So it would be like, it would be like, put in there like, in debt service, like we used to pay in debt service somehow?
Like if we were to build a new school?
It would, it would be, depending on what the end result is, you know, and I would hope we would, the bond would be for a little more than what we'd end up needing, so we don't need that much. But then at the end, we would pay so much a year until that's paid off, and it would be in debt service, correct? We have to build it into our budget.
So it's, it won't be, it won't be in our budget. It'll be in the county's budget, because the school board can't issue debt.
Well, I was going to say, is the county responsible for building the schools though?
Yes, jails and all the rest of it.
Right. So, I mean, that's not, that doesn't come from like our, our state money. I mean, like our, our normal operating budget that we have from here does not include service and debt for new buildings? Is that more, that's more of the county side?
That is not in TISA.
We're not getting funding to go build new schools.
Correct.
So if we got to build a school, or we've got to renovate a school, that, that burden falls to the county.
But they, but they will put us in debt service to pay that back.
That's right. So inside the county general fund is an account for debt service. Now, this would be our first experience, obviously, having to build a school and then put it into debt service. And we would meet with Mayor Huffman and Director Vayner to finalize those details.
I've been kind of thinking about looking at like all of our schools and coming up with like a, like an age for like each school. Just be about having on sheet paper and look at it and say, not necessarily just when it was built, but like what renovations has it had, what additions has it had? And then be able to look at that and to know how old our schools are, because.
Correct.
I mean, how, how old was the Cresby School?
Nineteen eighty-two and nineteen ninety-two.
Eighty-two?
Eighty-two and ninety-two.
I mean, they were, how, how old does a school have to be before we really start looking real hard at major renovations?
Well, and you think about, Mr. Matt, you think about the newest school that we have.
They said not eighteen, but I think it's.
It's oh-eight.
Okay, so it's eighteen.
When did 2009?
I thought it was oh-six, oh-seven maybe?
Maybe it is, oh-six, oh-seven.
It wasn't eighteen, and I'm like, I think it's really close.
It's close.
Our new school's almost eighteen years old.
Correct, the newest school we have.
So that's when I was thinking, you know, how do you look at, I mean, a school that's forty years old, so eighty-two? You know, that was forty-two years old?
Eighty-two and ninety-two.
Okay.
Completely different coding here. Right now, international, Mr. Jason will tell you all the new codes and everything. Absolutely. So having that all as an asset list, if nothing else, so that we can look at it and review it. And almost like our capital projects plan on steroids, like this is, these are the schools, absolutely.
But that does fall to the county to not only fund it, but, so we're saying debt service. I mean, where does that payment come from, I guess? What budget does that payment come out to for the debt service?
Property tax.
Property tax. Okay, that's why I was making sure.
But when we were paying debt service as part of, that we were paying for my budget, we ran a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year for debt service. Correct, we were, up until like last.
But that's what I'm saying, property tax, but the county has no debt. You know, I mean, we hadn't, we hadn't built a new school since, in seventeen years. We got thirteen schools. So if you rebuilt every school in fifty years, you're building a school every four years, you're building a school.
That's unrealistic.
Well, but you got thirteen schools.
But I understand what you're saying.
You got thirteen schools. When was our last big, major renovation?
Right.
You know? I'd like to see that on paper, because I think that's what we take.
Safe room at a total. Yeah.
Yep, okay.
And that was grant.
But we take that to the funding body and say, look, you know, here's our current state of the whole portfolio, you know? And, and what, how do we come up with a ten-year plan, you know? What's our twenty-year plan if we want to go real far out? But, you know, really, I'm thinking more five-year.
I agree. I mean, I think, I think all your comments are incredibly relevant. I, I agree. And then, and let me, let me throw this in. I mean, Katie was talking a little bit ago, right? She was talking about, you know, obviously, this ridiculous stuff that they're doing up there with all the legislation. However, one of the things, you know, when they ask us questions about some things with the funding formula, because that's another one they've talked about, right, with TISA? You know, we shared with them, with superintendents, and we're in our opposition to what they're currently doing with the ESA piece. But also, look, TISA doesn't fund everything. I mean, we have like individual devices for students to get on. We have, we have Chromebooks. We don't have iPads. We have $200 Chromebooks, right? That's not covered in there. You know, for new buildings, building renovations, building maintenance. None of that's covered in TISA. I mean, insurance, that's not covered in TISA. I mean, none of that stuff's in there. New buses, as we replace, even if we outsourced them, that's still a cost. I mean, that, that's not covered in there. So there are multiple things like that that will consistently be something that comes up that we are not funded.
Yep.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Because the county thinks, oh, a hundred percent, a hundred percent. That's right, that's right.
Is there a way to get a capital funds budget increase?
Oh, I've requested that. What, what, you're talking about from the county or from the station?
See, Dr. Combs really had an excellent capital project plan. I mean, he's went through all these older buildings, putting new roofs on them.
Well, let's talk about that. But now, how much of that came from that Esser funds? How, how much of what we get in?
The roofs came, well, the HVAC systems are from Esser.
Which is how many millions, I mean, just the ballpark millions?
The roofs were too. Yeah, and we talked about that, I think that number I sent you, uh,
Twenty-seven million.
Twenty-seven something million. And that's all, again, what they were talking about, the Esser funding ending. That was, that was our biggest capital projects.
But that was all COVID-related. COVID, that was pump money, get the money out there, just so everybody's, and then we spent that money wisely.
Correct.
Okay? But what if we hadn't got that money? That would have had to come from the county, right?
Yes, sir.
So they kind of got off the hook for that.
Yes, sir. That's right.
We're getting the tornado.
The county or us?
Tornado got them off the hook for the two new schools, in a way, right? So, you know, in a way, in a way, so. I'm, I'm going to look at the big.
What do the kids say? I'm picking up what you're putting down? Yeah, no, I'm, I'm with you. And that, and that's something that I can, that's something that I can, that I can share as well.
Because I'd like to put a big, whole packet together. You know, because there may be, you know, things that need being addressed, right?
That's right. Well, and you talk about, you know, we're going to start seeing some growth. I mean, when, when, when that blue oval thing is even more, you'll already see an interest. But when that comes in, there are going to be more things like this that we're going to need to look at. So I, I, I agree.
You can't build and hope that comes though.
No, no, it's the opposite. It's not fill the dreams.
If we've got forty-year-old buildings that haven't really had any major renovation.
Correct.
In forty years.
That's right.
When, when are you going to do it?
That's right. Esser, Esser gave us bathroom renovations. We replaced a third of our HVAC systems, new roofs. Esser and the capital projects plan did all that.
Yep.
You are correct.
Yep.
Yep.
The county has none of that.
I concur. That's right. And, and sprinkler head bursting in four schools. That's got us subdued up. That's right.
Last time we had that big growth, that's where we did, and the bonds that we just paid off.
Yes, sir.
Two years ago was all the growth, and all the new schools we built.
Yes, sir.
Yep.
I mean, I think that's a, I think that's a fair question to ask.
Carry on, Dr. Combs.
Yes, sir. Oh, that was it. But like I said, when I, when I go, when I come in April, number one, Linkus should be here, and they'll have some things to say. And then also, I hope I have maybe a little better number at that point, and we can share that. And at that time, I will probably, you know, ask you for, you know, what, what we need to kind of do next. Because obviously, I need to have your, your vote to say, yes, move forward with this, before I put it before that body and say, hey, we, you know, we need this. But like I said, I did go ahead and have a precursor conversation with the mayor last week. And, you know, we were, we had about an hour, hour and a half long meeting, and, and he understands the need for it. I mean, because we can't count on the other things.
Yep, it's there.
You can't. You're right.
Thank you, Dr. Combs.
Yes, sir.
Thank you all. Director of Operations, Mr. James Fields.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Dr. Combs, I just want to say publicly, I was glad to hear that you're extending your contract one more year. You've done some amazing things for Tipton County Schools, and it's blessed to be working with you.
Appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. James.
So Bill, you can cancel that retirement meeting. I just have a couple things before we bring up transportation. So we had several schools too that have wanted to receive the Tennessee Purple Star Award. And that award, the Tennessee Purple Star Award is provided to military-friendly schools that display major commitment to serving military-connected families and students. For a school to be honored with the Tennessee Purple Star Award, the school must complete all the required school activities and one optional activity such as Veterans, Veterans Day Program, nine-eleven programs, and the Purple Day Program. Our social workers serve as a point of contact for each school to make sure that they met all the eligibility requirements. Schools that earned the award will receive a special Tennessee Purple Star Award certificate to display in their buildings. All the schools will be posted on Tennessee State Board of Education website. All of our schools, all thirteen schools, will, will receive this award. And there was only forty-four schools in the state of Tennessee that will be getting this award, and all of our schools. So, Dr. Combs, again, I congratulate you on having our schools being part of that. I think you're on a committee of that organization.
Yes, sir. That was, that was pretty cool. Yeah. Yeah, that was awesome.
ABM is working closely with us with a smooth transition. I speak with them like three times a week. They're holding a job fair, March eighteenth and nineteenth, for the, for the current workers. They're already moving equipment into the district. I think the workers are going to get a bump in pay. So I'm, I'm very excited about it. I think our schools are going to be much cleaner. We'll be able to get you the opening enrollment numbers in the May meeting and an expected overall enrollment. We had two teams to participate in the sub-state basketball games. It was Covet and Girls and Montra Boys. And we're very proud of those programs. And I thought this was worthy of sharing with you all. You know, of course, I go to a lot of games, and the Covet and cheerleaders, they, they kind of caught my eye. They're well-behaved, they're organized, they're always smiling, they're greeting people. They're doing what cheerleaders are supposed to do. So I asked Ms. Young, she's a cheerleader sponsor, I said, so what are your expectations? What's the criteria to, to be on, to be on your squad? And she said, well, I have twenty-three students. She said they have to sign a contract and keep a minimum of a three-point-oh GPA. They have to log in so many community hours, service hours, through churches, children, family services, and college initiative programs. And I thought that was super impressive. Fourteen of their members are in NHS. The nine that are not, they're freshmen. And I don't think freshmen can, I don't think they can be in an honest society. Three of the seniors have already accepted, already been accepted to MTSU, Harvard University, and one into the US Army with a three-year tour in Germany. So that, that just speaks volumes of, of her program. And I just want to commend them. The last thing I have is Drug Free Tipton. They came to speak to our principals about vaping. I spoke with Robin Racine, I think she's a coordinator. And we're just trying to put things in a curriculum to deter kids from vaping. I have seen a decrease overall, but I've also seen them starting younger in elementary schools. I think we had three vape citations this year from fourth and fifth graders. So I appreciate her coming down and sharing some information with us. Any questions for them?
Thank you, Mr. Fields. Thank you. What about Trash Paces Survive, Mr. Charlie?
I'm Will.
I mean, Will?
We confuse him all the time.
I'm sorry, Will.
I'm smarter and better-looking than Charlie.
He says live on.
Charlie would have been here, but his sister-in-law wouldn't labor today. So he took off to Jackson to go be with his brother and his family. So good for him and their family. If everybody looked at your folder, you'll have my, we found an invitation to bid back on March eighth. We opened them on March the eighth, and we received one bid back on some used buses.
Why can't we get one bid, Will?
Uh, the biggest reason is there's not a lot out there. You know, there's, there's, there's not a lot of inventory, whether it be used or new. Like I said, the new ones, we ordered back in October, November. You know, we won't see those until, I'm hoping, July. And the used buses, they're just, people aren't getting rid of them. Hang them. The place we found these, they actually have five right now. I wish we could get all five, but unfortunately, we're going to get two for now. They go from there.
So that's why we're buying two used buses.
Correct.
What's the price of a new bus now?
Uh, so the new, conventional are rated about a hundred and thirty thousand, approximately.
And they get eighteen years, right?
Correct. After eighteen years, we'd have to retire them.
Yeah, you're getting it, these at fifty-six thousand, a pretty good deal then.
It is a really good deal. It is a really good deal. Uh, even if these were put in service in 2017, which you do see that frequently, even though it's a 2018 model, so it couldn't have been put in service in 2017, you know, we'll still get ten good usable years out of it for less than half the price.
Yep.
What kind of mileage do we typically get on a bus?
So it really depends, as far as how many miles they have on them. Uh, so it really depends on the route. You know, the city routes, we might not put ten, twelve miles a day on them. But your routes that are out in the Drummond's area, you know, we pay put twenty, thirty miles a day on them. Depends on the driver, depends on what that driver does. If that driver is doing a morning and afternoon route, as well as, you know, a project exceed route, you know, they can put, you know, forty, fifty thousand miles a day on, on a bus, so.
Late games, band competitions.
Right.
I mean, the expectancy of our buses, like.
So I got on one yesterday, as a matter of fact, and it had two hundred and thirty-two thousand miles on it. And that bus has got one more year. You know, most time when we send them to auction, you know, they've got upwards of a hundred and fifty, a hundred and sixty thousand on them, typically.
Two hundred and thirty thousand, that's my luck with my cars.
Is this your recommendation for this bid?
Yes, sir.
Motion by Mr. Benson, second by Ms., you banks any questions? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passed.
Do you want to do like an average daily rider count, any sort, how many students are actually transported these days?
Um, yes. Ms. Renee knows that. Um, yes, Ms. Renee, is that?
I can tell you that.
I somewhere.
Hey, that's the truth.
Do you email the, Mr. Renee, let her look that up and send it to you.
Just, just curious.
Yeah.
Didn't they, didn't they change the law where you had to change it from years to miles? Do I remember something about it changed?
Just like miles don't matter.
It's been mostly years, they changed.
It's just the years, so anything that has a single rear wheel, we can only run it for fifteen years, which we don't buy any of those any longer. Uh, so if your smaller sped buses have a single rear wheel, we can only run those for fifteen years, but anything with a dual rear wheel, uh, we can run it for eighteen years. Now, fifteen years, they have to go, and it's called extended utilization, we have to inspect it twice a year, uh, but we can run them eighteen years.
Yeah, I knew there was something changed, I couldn't.
Right.
Yeah, are there any other questions for, for Mr. Will?
And, and another note, I know a while back, we talked about, uh, we did the, uh, incentive for new bus drivers.
Yep.
And we allocated five thousand dollars to the thousand-dollar incentive for those five drivers, and, uh, we had hired all five of those drivers. And we also have two more that are gonna test next week, a third one the week after, and I had a fourth one yesterday after I tested, uh, that's gonna start, uh, he's an old driver, so he already had all the.
Should've come back here for more money tonight.
I know, I.
How many are we still short?
To be honest, I'm more short on buses than on drivers at this point, if I filled every bus driver position, I would not have the buses to put them in.
That's, that's the first time in a long time, right?
That's correct.
Yes.
Uh, the year after next, we're gonna lose sixteen buses, at the end of this year, we're not gonna, we're only gonna lose one that's already out of service anyway. After next full year, I'm gonna lose sixteen, the year after that, I'm gonna lose an additional thirteen.
Dang, year after next.
Yes.
When, when do we extend my contract to?
All right, thank you, Will.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Anyway.
How many did you say are, uh, up track, come on board again, best drivers?
Um, so we have, we filled all five positions, um, and I have another four, so now.
Got you.
Thank you. Ms. Renee said fifty-five hundred riders, you think?
Okay.
That's, there you go.
I'm still emailing that out.
Okay, yeah.
Mr. Billy Dawery, financial resources.
Ladies and gentlemen. So, I wanted to start out tonight with the bonus update, obviously, that's the topic of discussion, uh, the bonus had been processed and will officially post tomorrow. On everybody's paycheck, those, the bank, those banks that get them early, they've already gotten, we've got some phone calls. One thousand three hundred and twenty-seven employees got a bonus, this is the exact numbers from the figures off the reports, one thousand three hundred and twenty-seven, totaling one million, four hundred and nine thousand, four hundred and sixty-one dollars and two cents. And that was, uh, one point two-three-three million in salaries and the remainder was in payroll liabilities. And so, uh, I do want to mention to you all, uh, he's not going to let me say this, but I have to, cause we have business to do with it. First of all, Dr. Combs, again, behind the bonus, he also has, uh, donated his bonus, that you gave him as a performance bonus for the fourth year in a row. He's not taking the, the performance bonus, he's donated to the endless possibility scholarship, so, uh, we'll be coming back next time we do amendments in one forty-one to move, he's writing, checking out his personal checking account, right to the schools, and so we'll amend that money for this coming year's endless possibility of scholarships, so, I think that's important. Four years in a row, it's a lot of money he's giving to the scholarships. Thank you, Dr. Combs.
Thank you, y'all, y'all gave it to us.
Well, well, well-used, and, yeah.
Appreciate that very much.
That's why he wants to name the new, uh, school, uh, John Combs Education.
Hey, I wanna, I do wanna teeter-totter or something.
We have a rule that you had to be in seats before you have a building named after.
Okay, never mind.
That's, that's a long time.
You can just buy a bus.
We'll just see Mister Bean in the window.
Carol, uh, Mr. Dawery.
So the next item is, Mr. Chairman, as you all know, we use Skyward Student Enrollment Systems and Skyward Finance, uh, for our district records management system. The board adopted that system in twenty fifteen, and they take three-year agreements, so fiscal year sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four. So after this year, we're ready to sign another three-year agreement, so what they do, they lock us into a per-student price, if you don't take the three-year deal, they promise you no cap on the price, they can flush away, so, Mr. Chairman, I ask for a motion tonight, the, the board allow Dr. Combs to execute a contract with Skyward for a three-year contract, as we have previously for the next three fiscal years.
Uh, we heard the request, motion by Mr. Jenkins, second by Ms. Uvain, any questions about it?
What's it, per year?
Uh, it's actually paid for, depending on what the component of the software is, it's based on student enrollment, so for example, um, and, so it's three dollars and seventy cents. This is July first, twenty-four through twenty-seven, for the business course week modules, it's a dollar and two cents for the fast-track module, five cents for the fixed assets module, five cents for the insurance tracking module, sixteen cents for the professional development center, and a dollar and fifty-eight cents for the support suite, and of course, that is, you have to take that total and multiply that times the number of our enrollment each year, and that's how they determine what we owe.
How much of an increase, was it increase, decrease from what, what?
Uh, no, it's not, it's actually about the same, uh, maybe a few cents, but now, if we didn't do it, you could see the dramatic increase that it would be if we didn't sign the contract, and of course, then that wouldn't be guaranteed the next year either, so, minimal cost, so.
Any other questions, y'all? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed.
The next thing I would like the board, Mr. Chairman, as you all know, the board is part of a number of purchasing cooperatives, uh, you all have voted to, there's a number of them, I won't go over the whole list, uh, that we use, and what that is, is we, not just piggyback, but these national cooperatives go out and they get these good deals on contracts on items specific to schools and everything else, and local governments can buy off them without going through the bidding process, makes it a lot smoother sometimes. One of the ones that we're not a member of is the Buy Board Purchasing Cooperative, and so, apparently, Buy Board carries a lot of STEM-related items, and so our program managers that are pushing through these STEM grants have asked that we become a member of this purchasing cooperative, so I would ask you all for permission, Mr. Chairman, a motion, to, uh, agree to allow the school board to become a member of the Buy Board National Purchasing Cooperative. If this board approves that, we would go to the county commission, I hope Dr. Combs can get a letter out to the mayor to do it this Monday, so we can go ahead with some purchases, if not, it would be the next month, but they have to purchase it, I mean, they have to approve it too, because this negates the county's purchasing policy, so basically saying, instead of having to put out the bid, you can do purchasing cooperative, so they have to approve it too, and it has to be spread on the minute of the clerk's minutes.
Do we have a motion, motion by Mr. McCann, second by Mr. Jenkins, any question? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed.
Aren't they a big, aren't they in TSB, aren't they?
TSB, you got, oh, Buy Board.
Okay, yeah.
They're a huge supporter, and they, and they cover, so you can, uh, move it and look at the different vendors that are part of it.
Lot of schools in Tennessee do, a lot of systems, yeah.
Uh, the next thing you'll see in your, uh, folder that require a motion is the financial reports for the funds, and so, uh, that concludes my presentation, I do wanna make a couple of comments about some of the things that I heard tonight, just to plant some seeds. One of the things about buying the buses, we've discussed that at length, you know, the significant number, Mr. Vanon brought that up. Last week, Will and I were a member, uh, in a meeting with the Government Finance Officers Association, and there was a roundtable of people saying, how are you handling these significant capital expenditures, like, how are you, how are you absorbing that in your budget? Then, this is premature discussion, I don't know that this is what we would do, but one of the ways to forego that, that they're doing, is they take the number of capital assets on their balance sheets, and so if a bus shop has got thirty percent of the capital assets, every year, their budget is charged thirty percent of their assets, and at the end of the fiscal year, that thirty percent goes into a restricted fund for capital expenditures. And so then, when it comes time to buy those buses, instead of going out to those transportation accounts, you've got this money sitting there restricted, that you're setting aside two thousand dollars a year, so that when the time comes to spend three-point-eight million, you're not going to fund balance, you're basically setting it aside in fund balance. That's what a lot of other counties have started to do, one of the ones that is working really well for that, I wanna talk more to, is the, uh, is Gatlinburg Finance Director, uh, they're using the program and have, had a lot of success out of it, so, the only two things they don't buy out of this program, uh, are fire trucks and, what else did he say, fire trucks and something else?
Garbage trucks?
Yeah, because of the fact that they're so specific in large expenditure, so, that's something for us to keep in mind as we move forward on our strategic planning, is to set aside those percentages, and that may even work for, uh, capital projects, you know, Dr. Combs has done a phenomenal job with capital projects with this board's, uh, graces, to get things in the oil. So, uh, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report, let's, well.
I can include my report, and include Mr. Combs' report, I'm gonna call, which is big, let's do the one forty-two.
Okay, all right. Yes, sir, somebody.
Well, I was gonna, I'm gonna apologize beforehand, I was planning to make a motion tonight, but I would, I'd like to make a motion that we allocate five thousand more dollars to be able to pay bonuses for the poor people upcoming through the process, and maybe, uh, James can tell us next, uh, month if they need any more money.
For the bus drivers?
You've got four, you've got four guys being processed, but we don't have any money to pay them, apparently, I think we, we paid out the five thousand that we allocated already.
Yes.
So I'm asking for five thousand more dollars allocated to bus driver bonuses.
Well, most of them have a second, we've done it before, uh, second, motion by Mr. Benson, second by Mr. Clark, to allocate five thousand dollars, bonus, uh, side-on bonuses for five bus drivers, we have four now, so, that would give an extra bus driver, so, uh, is there any questions about it, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed.
And that's certainly doable for, uh, we'll be bringing, you know, end-of-the-year amendments to y'all anyway, as we start to clean up the budget and move things around for expenditures from our projections, I anticipate the next two months have those type of amendments, and we'll include those, uh, in there.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dawery.
Thank you, Will will come up and do the one forty-two.
All right, so, to start, I only have three, oh, we have two, is entitlement funding application, uh, Esser three-point-oh and the ATS I twenty-two grant, and then we have one in the competitive funding application, which is the HQIM grant, as the Literacy Implement, Implementation Network. You'll see them on the April column in the budget document, and I also want to advise the board that these amendments will be combined in the April column, uh, in the document, along with the amendments you, you approved in the February eighth. All right, so, Mr. Chairman, I ask for a motion.
Okay, we, we heard the request, do we have a motion? Motion by Mr. Farrell, second by Ms. McClark, and are there any, any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Will. Dr. Combs, other business, would you like to add anything?
Uh, just, I, I appreciate it, and y'all, I, I'm telling you, I, I told you this before, but I, I talk to other superintendents, and I tell them, like, the support that I get from y'all, that this whole system gets from y'all, and it's, it's almost like they think I'm kidding, I mean, but y'all are, y'all are amazing, so, thank you for letting us do this stuff, appreciate it.
We, we thank you.
I wanna personally invite, uh, Mr. McCann to come with me to the next finance committee meeting.
Yeah, he needs to go.
I'm just saying.
Hey, he didn't go, so.
That is a, that is a full real invitation, come on, yeah.
All right, anybody else have anything? Do we have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Mr. Jenkins, second.